All right. Welcome to our December 14, 2020 meeting. Thank you for being here tonight. We're going to start with a proclamation from the mayor for Tree City USA.
Yes, thank you. If I could have Mrs. Price join me up front and anybody else that wants to come? Whoa, sorry. How are y'all?
Great.
Good. You're very welcome. So this is a proclamation for Tree Awareness Month and Arbor Day, and I'll read this out loud and then we can take pictures or whatever it is you need to do. So whereas the city of Homewood acknowledges that a healthy urban forest composed of significant portion of native trees is vital to public health, a sound infrastructure, civic pride, and the economic and aesthetic value of the city; and whereas the presence of an urban forest, when properly managed as part of a comprehensive landscape plan, will promote soil conservation, reduce flooding, improve air and water quality, reduce noise pollution, provide a buffer between residences and businesses, and increase property values; and whereas the city of Homewood finds that it is in the public interest and welfare of its citizens, present and future, to promote the protection of trees throughout the city; and whereas Green Skies Over Homewood is an annual native tree replenishment initiative run by the Homewood Environmental Commission; and whereas Arbor Day is observed throughout the nation and the world, now therefore I, Patrick McCloskey, mayor of the city of Homewood, Alabama, do hereby proclaim the month of November as Tree Awareness Month and the first Saturday of the month of November as Arbor Day in the city of Homewood and urges all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to organize or join in activities planned throughout the month of November such as Green Skies Over Homewood tree plantings, seed collection activities, tree education programs organized by the Homewood Environmental Commission, and all other efforts to protect our trees and urban forests. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the great seal of the city of Homewood and the state of Alabama this day, and of course, this is from earlier, but 20th of November 2020. So, but just wanted to present this to you guys. Absolutely. We appreciate everything that you guys have done for us. Yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm ill-prepared. Yeah. I'm sorry about that. I fell down on my doobies. Sorry. Okay. Ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. Sorry.
Thank you so much. Yay for the team.
Thank you guys, absolutely. Sorry it was a little late. We got it done.
Thank you. All right. With that, I will call this meeting to order, and we will start with the invocation and pledge. The invocation will be brought to us by Father Mueller tonight.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the gift of life and for the promise of eternal We thank you for the goodness of the people who serve the city of Homewood. We ask you to bless our mayor, our city council, and bless our law enforcement officers and firefighters. Continue to bless this council. May they receive help in making wise and just decisions. Bring peace to the troubled places in this world today. May there be peace in our own families. Thank you for the goodness of the members of this council to give so generously of their time. And we pray this prayer in the name of Jesus, our Savior. Amen.
Will face the flag.
The flag of the United States of America, for which it stands, "One Nation Under God, Invisible, with Liberty and Justice for All."
All right. Ms. Salter, if you will, call roll, please.
Yes, sir. Councilor Waltony?
Here.
Councilor Gier?
Here.
Councilor Alamon?
Here.
Councilor Wolverton? He said he was going to do Zoom. Okay, Zoom. Okay, gotcha. Councilor Sims?
Here.
Councilor Jones?
Here.
Councilor Smith?
Here.
Councilor Nelms?
Here.
Councilor Andrus?
Here.
Councilor Harden?
Here.
And President Wyatt?
Here.
So via Zoom, you got everybody.
Thank you very much. All right. Next, we have the reading of the minutes from our meeting of November 30, 2020. I believe these have been distributed by Ms. Salter by email. I would entertain a motion to dispense with the reading and approval of those minutes.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Andrus. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That passes 11 to 0. All right. Next, we'll move on to board vacancies and appointments. We will start with, we have an at-large position on the HEC. I believe this is Dr. Price's term, which is expiring this month. We will open that, I guess, until probably our first meeting in January, especially since we're meeting next week, and that will be the 12th? No. 11.
11.
Andrews, that work for you?
Say that one more time.
Do we open that until January 11th?
Yes, that sounds good.
Okay. So that one will be open until January 11th. What time do we, is it 4:30?
4:30, and Dr. Price is available, does already, would like to be considered for a second term. I know y'all already opened it as well.
Correct.
She would like to be considered for a second term. She's only served one so far.
Got it. Thank you. All right. And then we had a Ward 1 Arts Advisory Council that closed today, but I don't think we've gotten any applicants yet, so why don't we reopen that also until January 11th at 4:30? All right. And thank you, Ms. Salter, for scouring the list for openings. We appreciate that.
We have a couple more to come next week.
Even better. Thank you. All right. We do have one addition to the agenda tonight. It'll be in addition to other new business, 09-12-20, request to approve restaurant retail liquor license, wine beer liquor to Valor Beverage Management LLC, DBA Valley Hotel, pending approval of fire and police. That will be added to new business tonight. So with that addition, do I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So move.
Motion by Mr. Harden, second by Mr. Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As approved, 11 to 0.
Is Councilor Wolverton voting via Zoom?
Yes.
That brings us to the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Waltony, second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That is approved, 11 to 0. Which brings us to the old business agenda. First item is 08-11-20, public hearing set for January 11th, 2021 at 6:00 p.m. for consideration of changes to the zoning ordinance, brought to us by Mike Kendrick, the city attorney, myself, and the PND Chair, Councilor Andrus. I know that this was voted out of PND, but I think we're going to hold the report until the night of the public hearing, so we will hold that until January 11th.
I'll just have to remember to bring the minutes back to that day. So let me remember that.
I'll remember. I'll remind you.
Next item is 13-11-20. It's also a public hearing set for January 11th for consideration to rezone property at 2510 18th Street South from C2 Neighborhood Shopping District to R7 Attached Dwelling Unit District, brought to us by Gold Nugget LLC to permit the construction of an eight-unit townhouse development. This was, has already made it through the planning commission with a vote of 8 to 0 in favor. This one also, I believe, was voted out of PND, but we'll hold that report as well for the public hearing on January 11th. Next item, 14-11-20, public hearing set for January 11th, 2021 at 6:00 p.m. for consideration to rezone property at 75 Bagby Drive from C1 Office Building District to MXD Mixed Use District, brought to us by Melinda Sellers of Burn &amp; Foreman and Addison Investments LLC for uses or charter school institutional facility. This one, we will also wait and hold the report until the public hearing on January 11th. Next item, 14-11-20, public hearing set for January 11th, 2021 at 6:00 p.m. for consideration to rezone property at 75 Bagby Drive from C1 Office Building District to MXD Mixed Use District, brought to us by Melinda Sellers of Burn &amp; Foreman and Addison Investments LLC for uses or charter school institutional facility. This one, we will also wait and hold the report until the public hearing on January 11th. Got a lot of these.
Uh-huh.
15-11-20, public hearing set for January 11th, 2021 for consideration to rezone property at 55 and 65 Bagby Drive from C5 General Business District to MXD Mixed Use District, brought to us again by Melinda Sellers of Burn &amp; Foreman and 5565 Bagby Associates LLC for potential college. This one, we will also hold the report until the public hearing on January 11th.
You just didn't want to hear it from me tonight.
I did not.
I advocated for you, but he just said hold it.
He said, nope, I don't want to hear it.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, but don't worry, Albert's not playing. It's okay. Next item, 24-08-20, request to make changes to the city's resolution regarding city contributions to retiree insurance and add a monthly stipend for both single and family retiree insurance in order to help city keep their preferred rate, brought to us by former mayor Scott McBrayer. And we will begin with a report from finance.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met on December 7th, and we had several meetings where Mr. Squires and the two chiefs worked through different scenarios, and we feel like we have a very good resolution. So we met that night, voted 4 to 0 to recommend approval. It's been distributed, and we've gone over the details, but if anyone has questions, it should have been sent to you, so if you have any questions, let me know. But 4 to 0 coming out of finance.
Thank you very much. Since it's coming out of finance, we won't need a motion, but does anyone have any questions or comments before we vote? All right. And with that, we'll go ahead and take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 11 to 0 and will be Resolution 20-180. All right. Next item, 02-10-20, bid opening held on November 30, 2020 at 5:00 p.m. for city communication services, brought to us by Councilors Andrus and Smith, and we'll also have a report from finance on this one.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. We met and voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval, and basically, this is the one that we are moving to, we're recommending that be reopened on January 4th. 4th at 4:30.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then we will reset that, or I guess this is a, do we need a motion, or is that a motion from finance?
That's a motion from finance.
Okay, that's the motion from finance.
We made a motion to approve, and then we reset the opening for, yeah, January 4th. So that did come out of finance.
Okay. Mr. Kendrick, do we need a vote on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Since you've already published that, I'd like to, but at least for records.
Got it. Okay. All right. Then we will have a vote on the motion from finance to reset this bid opening for January 4th at 4:30. Well, that the bids be in by 4:30 on January 4th.
And opened at 5:00 p.m.
Got it. Yeah. Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So that passes 11 to 0. Do we need a resolution for it?
No.
Just a vote? Okay. All right. Next item, 06-10-20, request to amend fiscal year 2021 budgets for any encumbrances that will need to roll forward to fiscal year, from fiscal year 1920, brought to us by Robert Burgett, our city finance director, assistant city clerk, and Melody Salter, our city clerk and assistant finance director. And we will also have a report from finance on this?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met, voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of these encumbrances.
All right. So we have a motion from finance. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And that also passes 11 to 0, and that will be 20-181. All right. Next item, 20-10-20, request to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Kimley Horn for engineering services, brought to us by Clark Bailey and Wyatt Pugh, and also a report from finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met, voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of this item.
All right. We have a motion from finance. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And also passes 11 to 0 and will be 20-182. All right. Next item, 22-10-20, request to consider capital budgets, budget, I'm sorry, request to consider capital purchase for police body cameras and possibly amend fiscal year 2021 capital projects budget for the same, brought to us by Chief Ross, Robert Burgett, and Melody Salter. Another report from finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met, voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of this item. This will be a savings for this particular fiscal year, and then we'll be adding the cloud storage for subsequent years, but I appreciate the chief going and looking into those options, and so the cloud storage will be included in year 1.
Fantastic. All right. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And also passes 11 to 0 and will be Resolution 20-180.
There's really no resolution. Not, we talked about that. It's just simply going to be a matter of charging and flexing.
Since it's just amending, what's there?
Essentially, it was informing about additional cost going toward.
We didn't end up having to amend it. We thought we were going to, but with the new pricing it got from this different vendor.
Where it went down.
It'll just be next year, we have to add some.
Got it. Right. So no resolution.
Basically, just now letting you buy the cameras that was budgeted.
Perfect. Thank you.
There's no contract either, right? So it's just.
What'd he say? Yeah, no contract.
So next item is 09-11-20, request to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Crown Castle for tower space to connect a radio system microwave link to the 911 center, brought to us by Chief Hill, Battalion Chief Broadhead, and the fire department's E911 department. Another report from finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met, voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval. This was already budgeted, so this is merely having the mayor sign the agreement.
All right. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'd like to abstain.
So we have a 10 to 0 to 1. Mr. Waltony abstaining.
Waltony abstains.
All right. And that will be Resolution 20-183. All right. That brings us to 12-11-20, request to authorize mayor to sign a contract with Sprint for, I don't, for a sales agreement. I'm not going to try to interpret what that IT means. Another report from finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir. This, Mr. President, this is my last item, I believe, here. So we've had enough. We spent enough for one night. We met and voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of this item. Again, it's budgeted, so asking the mayor to sign it.
All right. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And also passes 11 to 0. That will be Resolution 20-184. Which brings us to the next item, 16-09-20, request for consideration of a crosswalk over Broadway from Alleyway to Shades Road for school traffic, brought to us by Councilors Walter Jones and former councillor Patrick McCloskey, now mayor. A report from Public Safety, Mr. Waltony.
This item is passed by the Public Safety Committee on, I'm sorry, December 7th with a motion, or count of 5 to 0, my apologies, recommended for approval.
Thank you very much. All right. Any questions before we have the first reading? All right. Mr. Kendrick, can you give us the first reading?
Yes, sir. This is a notice to Brad for the installation of a pedestrian crosswalk across Broadway from the Alleyway to Shades Roads for school traffic in the city, being ordained by the city as follows. City, the chief of police shall be directed to install a pedestrian crosswalk across Broadway from the Alleyway to Shades Road for school traffic. Two, that all drivers and motor vehicles as defined in Highway Code shall yield to pedestrians located within the crosswalk as defined here and above. Section 3, that any person found guilty of violation of this ordinance shall be punished as provided by section 1-8 of the Code of Ordinances. Section 4, that all ordinances, the parts of ordinance contrary to the provisions thereof, are hereby repealed. Section 5, if any part of provision, this ordinance declared to be unconstitutional and invalid, by court of competent jurisdictions, such holding shall affect the other provisions or sections of the ordinance. Section 6, the provision of ordinance shall become effective, meagre upon suboption by the city council, approved by the mayor's or as otherwise becoming law.
Thank you very much. If there are no questions or comments, then I would entertain a motion for unanimous consent.
No.
Motion by Ms. Smith.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harden. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Councilor Waltony?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilor Gier?
Yes.
Councilor Alamon?
Yes.
Councilor Wolverton?
Yes.
Councilor Sims?
Yes.
Councilor Jones?
Yes.
Councilor Smith?
Yes.
Councilor Nelms?
Yes.
Councilor Andrus?
Yes.
Councilor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes.
That is 11 to 0. Motion to approve by Mr. Jones?
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. Another roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Councilor Waltony?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilor Gier?
Yes.
Councilor Alamon?
Yes.
Councilor Wolverton?
Yes.
Councilor Sims?
Yes.
Councilor Jones?
Yes.
Councilor Smith?
Yes.
Councilor Nelms?
Yes.
Councilor Andrus?
Yes.
Councilor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes.
That passes 11 to 0 and will be ordinance 2789?
Yes, sir.
Next item on the agenda is 10-11-20, request to work in the public right-of-way adjacent to 521 Cliff Place, brought to us by Lauren and Patrick McDavid, homeowners, and Phoenix Builders Group, and Greg Cobb from our BEZ department, and this is another report from Special Issues.
And President Wyatt, when we get to the committee referral agenda, I believe this is the one that was the duplicate that you'll end up dropping, just the Cliff Place.
Got it. Got it. Okay. It's showing up to two different places on the agenda, but we need to drop it.
It got actually put back on again, but it was already being reported. I'll just let you know.
All right. I believe we have a report from Special Issues. Ms. Smith?
Yes. Committee met last week and voted 5 to 0 to recommend approving the work in the right-of-way with the proper indemnification agreement. Motion was made by Ms. Andrus and seconded by Councilor Alamon.
All right. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 11 to 0 and will be Resolution 20-185. All right. Next item, 16-01-15, update on past, present, and future sidewalk projects, brought to us by Greg Cobb from BEZ Department, and Ms. Andrus, I'm going to let you report this one now.
I'm going to let Walter just report it for me. Okay, I'm ready. My moment is here. The committee met and voted 5 to 0 to refer sidewalk construction on Salter Road from Rockaway to South Wellington to the Finance Committee for public bid. The motion was made by Councilor Nelms and seconded by Councilor Sims. This item will also continue to be carried over in PND for further action.
Okay. So this, the Salter project is being sent to finance?
That's right.
Okay. And I am assuming we do not need a vote on that. Mr. Kendrick, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. That brings us to the committee referral agenda. As Ms. Salter noted, we have one item that we will need to take off because it was a duplicate. I believe it is 04-12-20, request to work in the public right-of-way adjacent to 521 Cliff Place.
Okay, I think I'm done.
I would move to drop 04-12-20.
Second.
All right. So I assume that, and you would approve the committee referral agenda as part of that motion?
Drop that item and approve the, from the, of the.
No, I'll second both of those.
Thank you. Motion by Ms. Smith and second by Ms. Andrus. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So that is 11 to 0. Those items will head to committee. That brings us to other new business. First item is 08-12-20, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for a period of December 1, 2020 through December 14, 2020. Mr. Jones, are you still in charge?
You're back to me. You're back to, yes. Yes, sir. Yeah, I'm nearing the end here. One more week before I pass it on to Ms. Smith, but I had several, several parts of the vouchers I've got answers on, and I did learn that Battalion Chief Broadhead makes really good grades, so his tuition reimbursement was in there.
Oh.
Anyway, Ms. Smith can vouch that I did too as well, can you?
Of course I can.
So anyway, I would move for approval of the vouchers for December 1st through the 14th.
Same motion by Mr. Jones, second by Ms. Smith. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 11 to 0. I've lost my place. That will be Resolution 20-186. Thank you, Ms. Salter. All right. That brings us to our final item of the night, 09-12-20, request to approve retail, restaurant retail liquor license, wine beer and liquor to Valor Beverage Management LLC, DBA Valley Hotel, brought to us by Ms. Salter, our city clerk and assistant finance director. Just so everyone understands, this was an item that, quite frankly, should have made it to the agenda and just didn't. It was more on the city than anything else. So we did amend it at the, that's why it was amended at the last minute, so that we wouldn't be holding up a liquor license. The license will be pending approval by police and fire. They will still need to do their work, but this way, the ABC Board can do its work if we go ahead and get this done. we go ahead and get this done. We've started to do this in the past. Yes, sir, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I was just going to move for having no objection to the issuance of license contingent upon fire and police approvals.
Sorry, was that Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. I was looking down. I apologize. Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Ms. Smith. Any further discussion or questions?
Where is Valley Hotel?
Oh, never mind. I'm sorry. I'm not sure if you've seen it.
Twenty-seven, twenty-seven, Eighteenth Street South.
I'm sorry. I remember all this. I was thinking Valley Avenue Hotel.
They already have, they already have a new address. Twenty-seven, twenty-seven, Eighteenth Street South.
Yeah, thank you. Please forgive me.
We can fill you in on it later. Don't worry.
I apologize.
You see it as you go in the post office?
I wrote down the word Valley and kept thinking Valley Avenue Hotel, Valley Avenue Hotel. Thinking, where is that?
All right. Any other questions? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that also passes eleven to zero and will be resolution twenty dash one, no resolution for that.
But we won't issue the letter that we need to until we get everything in. We just need your job to let us do it as soon as we get that in.
Okay. Thank you very much. That brings us to the end of our agenda. Mr. Mayor, you have any announcements tonight?
Excuse me, yes, just a few. First of all, I want to thank the council for the approval on the body cameras for the police department. I think that is incredibly beneficial for the city and for its citizens. I also want to thank them for approving the crosswalk over Broadway, which was something that was desperately needed and had been on the agenda for some time. So, you know, thank you guys for approving that. I will say this, I'm a little sad tonight, only because this is, you know, always the Christmas season, the last one for us, as far as council goes. I had a surprise for you guys tonight, unfortunately, due to some unforeseen circumstances. With some contact tracing, they were not able to come, but I had the carolers from the Exceptional Foundation.
Oh.
Were supposed to come tonight and sing for everybody, so I hate that we weren't able to do it. Robbie is very upset as well. He and I talked today. So I will get that rescheduled for the first of the year, along with probably the basketball game that we all look forward to every year. So just wanted to say that and just wish everyone a very Merry Christmas.
Are we not meeting next week?
Yeah, we are. He's just getting one in early.
Hey, President Wyatt.
Yes, ma'am.
Before you get to the council, I'm fixing to let Robert take over, but I was chastised by my staff, Ashley Bowes, particularly for not giving them appropriate shout-outs for the reception when y'all weren't welcomed in. So let me just say that they did a great job on our float. I cannot take the credit for it.
They did.
Bowes specifically, believe it or not, and Kelly, and my daughter Caitlin. But Kelly made bows and they did a really good job, so I didn't want to be remiss in publicly thanking the city clerk's office for the float, because I cannot take the credit for it myself. I'm not very creative, but Kelly is.
Credit is well deserved. It was fantastic. All right, Mr. Walton.
Just two quick things. I wanted to thank the mayor and the city staff that participated in making sure the Christmas parade went on. I hate that I had to miss it, but I was not going to turn down two sweet little girls and their mother for a night in Bethlehem, since we had reservations the same time. I also wanted to thank Ms. Salter and Mr. Burgett and their staffs for decorating the float. It looked wonderful, and I hate that I missed the, it wasn't the Christmas aardvark, it was the Christmas sloth, right?
Oh, yeah.
I hate that I missed the sloth.
Yeah, that's a hit. No question.
Thank you. So we're doing committees before council next week. Mr. Jones, are you still five o'clock?
Yes, sir. We don't have a lot on our committees, so it looks like fifteen minutes.
Mr. Walton, I don't know if you need to set public safety or not.
I do. It was on my list as well, but I forgot. Counselor Andrus, are we going to have any kind of presentation for the Holloway to Purdue intersection?
That's a good question. Randy was gathering some data. I hate to say, I think we might, yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Is that the only item that you're going to set it for?
I was going to set it, because we have a couple of items on the agenda, but I will go for twenty minutes. I was going to go for fifteen, but if he's going to do a presentation, we probably need a little bit longer. Why don't we set it for fifteen?
Let's set it.
If we have to go longer than we can.
Okay.
I don't want to waste time.
Okay.
All right, so I'll set PND, I'm sorry, planning, public safety for five fifteen. Okay?
One of those.
All right. Ms. Gier.
Yes, hi. Just wanted to thank the Arts Council for being one of the participants in the parade. And also, I have heard from several residents of Ward one interested in being on the council. I think they're just looking for a little more information and need a little push, so thanks for everybody who's interested, and we'll get that wrapped up by the eleventh.
Wonderful news. Thank you. All right, Mr. Alamon.
Yes, I just want to say thank you to everyone who participated in the parade, especially the residents who came out. Little holiday festivities, shout-out to the sloth, who made it a little bit more fun for the kids as they drove by. I also want to just point out that the numbers are increasing, but there's a little hope now with the vaccines being dispensed, and so just a shout-out to that things hopefully are beginning to turn around. And I want to mention that we thanked the police department by delivering some tamales today, so, for all their great service, and so I'm happy and proud to be able to do that. Thank you.
That's it. Thank you very much. Mr. Wolverton?
I guess the biggest thing for me tonight, so Trista's, Trista's dad had a medical event over the weekend and was medevaced up to Anchorage. He's having surgery tomorrow morning, so if you guys can keep in your prayers, it's not a, it's a fairly common, successful, typically procedure, but it is not a walk-in-the-park by any stretch, and he's got a lot of rehab and things ahead as well. So that's the big thing. I do, I do also want to reiterate, you know, that, you know, COVID numbers have been increasing. I've been in touch with coworkers at Brookwood. They have, now have three, three dedicated wings in the hospital that are normally typical patients, that are all COVID patients. They've converted one of the ICUs that's not normally a COVID ICU into that, and they've already filled up all of those spaces and are trying to figure out what they're going to do going forward, and I'm sure most other hospitals in town are trying to navigate the same, the same issues. So I just want to encourage people to make wise decisions and try to do their best to, you know, abide by Mayor McCloskey's PSA from last week with three W's, so. Other than that, I just also want to wish everybody a merry Christmas and thank everybody for their service and their friendship and camaraderie over the last, you know, several months as we've started the new term, so.
And do you want to set public works for five thirty?
Yes, let's go and do that.
And I think that will probably take thirty minutes, given what's on your agenda. Does that sound good to you?
I'll take your lead on that, yes.
Okay. All right. Then why don't we do thirty minutes, so anyone else setting things will need to go before five, if they have it. All right. Where am I? Mr. Sims.
Thank you. So, good evening, everyone. I just wanted to provide a few quick updates. First of all, appreciation for the city and the Cohaba Riverkeeper for addressing, you know, an issue that appeared the weekend of, I think, December four through six at Homewood Central Park. There were a couple people noticed a fish kill, and so the city got on that, tried to investigate it, as well as the Riverkeeper found out that it was actually related to a water main bus that the Birmingham Water Works addressed. So just anytime you see something like that, please report it to the city. We can also, you know, route that through to the Riverkeeper. You can, you know, contact them directly, but those things are important, so thanks to everyone who, you know, notified us about that and the city for their response. Also wanted to give a shout-out to Tech, who presented to us, you know, a couple weeks ago, the Environmental Club for Kids saw them out in downtown Homewood this past Saturday when I was shopping, and they'd actually gone to each individual business and provided, like, point-of-sale signs that said, you know, "Do you need a bag? Don't take one unless you need one," type awareness, so that if you don't need a plastic bag, you know, you don't have to grab one, and it was a really great touch to just, you know, spread the word about, you know, reducing the use of single-use plastics. And a couple of the business owners, I spoke to, in particular, the one at Be Bear, who was really impressed that the girls went to each business and did the presentation themselves. You know, it wasn't the parent doing it. So huge shout-out to them again for doing that and being there this weekend. Also, for those who are interested in learning more about the Brookwood Village visioning, Ward three, we're having an online virtual meeting this Wednesday at one PM. Counselor Jones and I are hosting that, so we can continue to keep the residents informed about what the plan there is and connect them directly with the developer at Arlington and Colliers. So if you have any questions about that, please reach out, and we'll make sure that you were sent the appropriate RSVP information for that Zoom link. Thanks so much. Also, Merry Christmas and Happy Hanukkah. And I guess the point of saying this now is we don't get to say it, I guess, as announcements in committee, right? So.
Well, we're going to have council next week, too, so we'll have both next week.
Okay, we're going to have both next week. Well.
Hanukkah will be over.
But Hanukkah will be over.
Happy Hanukkah.
So go ahead and get that one out now.
And we'll save the rest of the festivities for next time. Again, thanks to all for the help on the parade float. Really appreciate it.
All right, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, thank you. The, also, to piggyback on that, the Water Works did fix a main on Broadway, so we appreciate that. That was kind of icy one day, and so they were able to come out. So thank you to Berkeley for taking care of that. Also, yeah, thank you, Mayor, for the parade. It was great. My arm is still hurting, but I never thought we'd have that many. I mean, it's like someone say, "The car, okay, that's the end of the cars." And it's like, nope, nope, there were cars coming. So that was great. That was great, see that, and I think everybody appreciated that. And then, just looking at downtown Homewood, the shops are full. I mean, people are shopping, and that warms my heart. You know, I want to continue that. I mean, you know, I tend to be pessimistic sometimes, so I just call it out when I see it, so we want to continue to be successful and encourage everyone to come and shop in Homewood. And then, speaking of the pandemic, I mean, I'm happy about the vaccine, but it's, these are strange times. I typically, at church, I sing two services on Christmas Eve, and now we're doing eight services over four days. So pray for me that week. That'll be fun, like, two services a day. So anyway, Merry Christmas, and we'll see you next week.
Thank you very much. Ms. Smith?
Yes. I'm sitting here counting up my items for next week, and including the Maple Street Biscuit Company item, and I'm not sure, it seems like Berkeley said that the downtown trash item might be ready to go. Okay, yeah.
I think so.
So I have seven items in Special Issues, and I guess I'll start at four thirty, since I'll be the one that, oh my gosh, yes, so you're going to have to go.
I'm not setting PND.
Oh, you don't have to set PND.
Unless, I'll wait till it's my turn, but.
Okay. All right, so I think four thirty to five for me. And the parade was so much fun, and with, like Walter said, it was way harder than the regular parade. There was a lot of smiling and happy and waving. My arm was tired as well, but it was great, and it was so clear that people really needed that. So I'm glad that we were able to find a way to do it safely and make people happy at this time of year. I think that's it for me, and I'll wait and wish everyone a happy, a Merry Christmas next week, but Happy Hanukkah to those of us who are celebrating Hanukkah this week.
Thank you very much. Ms. Nels?
We had quite a few signs in Ward four that were either on the ground, illegible, couldn't read them, or just covered up by something. And I talked to Randy, and he was out probably less than three days after I requested him to go through. It's about three streets and about five different signs. One of them, I honestly could have gone myself and trimmed the shrubs, but I didn't know if the neighbors would appreciate that. They would think I was, like, in their yard, just kind of walking after bushes, so I just went through the appropriate, you know, the appropriate channels and asked them to take care of it, and they took care of it in, like, less than three days, and I just really appreciate it, that they took care of it in, like, no time. So, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Ms. Andrus?
Well, first I want to start, Counselor Walton, I was going to ask you if you had anything that you wanted to move on for the governing appearance of small cell antennas. Okay, so I'm not going to set PND.
Okay.
But I do have a lot of things to talk about, so. Let's go. All right, let's start with the Unified Command update. I know I sent you all an email today, but we are averaging over five hundred cases a day. Dr. Wilson said, quote, "Don't let your guard down. One slip-up is all it takes." He said, "This is threatening our workforce," and he said, "Be extremely vigilant." We had a hundred and sixty-six in the ICU yesterday, which is our highest number yet. It was up by over twenty from the week before and up by over twenty from the week before that, so actually over forty from two weeks back. So it's gone up over twenty the last two weeks. We had thirteen deaths yesterday, which was our highest number to date. Let's see, we have a hundred and one on ventilators. The, I want to thank the Jefferson County Information Center for getting out a script for Mayor McCloskey, and I want to thank Mayor McCloskey for getting a video out last week. I thought it was really well-received, and that's the message, you know, that's a cohesive message from the county, and I'm just glad to be a part of that conversation. The next round of messaging you're going to start seeing is going to be about the vaccine and the distribution of that, and that's going to start coming from the VA, and it's going first to health care and long-term care. Moderna is expected to be approved a week from today, so that's coming. Pfizer has been shown to be very safe and very effective. The interesting thing that came out today was about the doses. The first dose has been generally tolerated well. I know there's been a little bit of discussion about food allergies. My son has food allergies, so I've been trying to follow that conversation, but it's been tolerated generally well. But the second dose is when you begin to feel poorly. But as Dr. Wilson has said, that is your, that is what's supposed to happen, that is your immune system responding and reacting, and that's what's supposed to happen. So it doesn't cause you to get COVID, it is getting your immune system to react to that, so when it does, in fact, see the virus in the future, it knows how to react and how to respond. So that is the update today. Again, our own Battalion Chief Lori Stoney is Operations Chief for the Unified Command, so I always enjoy hearing from her. Okay, let's see. Okay, now's the part of the meeting when I talk about when I was out running and I ran into Randy Hamley, because it happened again. This is the third week in a row when I was out running and I ran into Randy Hamley. So the great news is that he and our utilities company were out boring underneath Lake Shore, so our pedestrian crossing is about to be coming any minute now at Windsor and Lake Shore. So that project's been about a year and a half in the works, and we finally got it, we, it's been budgeted for over a year and a half, and we finally got it approved through ALDOT, and then we got out there and realized we needed to bore under and get power, and so that was taking place on Friday. So that, you're going to be able to press a button, get a light, cross Lake Shore with that intersection, so that's awesome. I wanted to give you the litter getter update from Griffin Creek. I don't have Shades Creek updates, I don't know why, so I just asked for that, but I do have Griffin Creek update. To date, year-to-date, that thing has collected two hundred and ninety-two pounds of refuse, seventy-eight of which could be recycled. And in the month of November alone, it picked up a hundred and four pounds, and ten pounds of that was recycled. I also visited the Tech Girls on Saturday, bought me some bracelets, and it was pouring, pouring down rain. I felt so bad for them, because they had all these great things they wanted to sell, but the fact they were out there working on Saturday, I was so proud of them, they were awesome. And then lastly, Counselor Jones, have we appropriately celebrated your accomplishments with the ALM? I don't think that we have, and so I wanted to do that right now. That was a really big deal, and so, yeah, I'm just, like, super impressed with that, and I'm proud of you, and I just wanted to tell you that, so. That's it? And John, I know John always loves following me.
Mr. Harden, if you want to try.
Woo! Wow, I'm going to have to say very little, because there's no time. We did, as one of the last ones, it's always a little tougher, because everybody's already said everything, but I think we all had a great time at that parade, and Mayor, I don't know who, you, Berkeley, came up with that idea, but, you know, there was urban legends that the other cities were all, you know, mad, because we were doing it and they weren't, but, I mean, as Walter said, we couldn't believe how many people, we, I mean, I literally thought maybe, maybe we'd be there thirty minutes, and, I mean, it was almost an hour and a half of just, you know, waving, like, like you're, you know, Miss America or something, just constant waving, and I'm a long way from that, but anyway. But I appreciate the work that was done to put the float together. I mean, we just showed up and stood on the float, and, of course, the folks that did all the work, I was grateful for them. But other than that, thank everybody for their service.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Harden. I've just got a couple of things. First, I want to thank our city attorney, Mike Kendrick, for, once again, inviting the council to dinner tonight. I know that some will be able to make it and some won't, which is certainly fine, but I know we all appreciate the invitation, and thank you for that, as well as going through the proper channels with the Ethics Board to make sure that what we're doing is appropriate under the law, and once again, like you always do, and once again, we've gotten their seal of approval for this event, but we appreciate that.